Looks like we're live on YouTube.
Is it too high? That too high?
There, we got Willie Bennett.
How many more are we waiting on?
There's four of them.
They're just calling.
They're just calling.
Is that tonight?
Still getting a lot of that noise, I don't know from who, but. Do we have all the council members here?
Yes.
Present? So do we? Do I have, uh, do I have Marty Bomano?
He looks like he's on.
I see Marty's on.
I still don't know if he's got his volume on.
Marty, you all set? Marty. I see Marty's on, but we just.
I'll give him a call.
Okay. Yeah, if everyone could just mute unless you're talking or spoken to, if you can just put on mute, you'll probably end up with the background a little bit better, so.
I'm not even at it.
Why?
I want to see my picture.
How you doing, Alan?
Marty's on, but I think he's having trouble with his audio. Over this whole computer.
I see Marty's on, but we just.
Nancy, do you have your microphone on?
I can't hear.
Go ahead.
There you go, I can, yeah, there you go, okay, Nancy, I can hear you. Edwin, can you hear me?
They're all muted.
Yeah, you guys are all muted. You gotta unmute. There you go. Yeah, gotcha, Edwin.
Okay.
Don, you're still on mute, you need to unmute.
Yeah, I'm on the phone with Marty trying to get him to get on there.
Alright. Judge, you can hear me, right? Yeah. Okay. Still wait, still waiting on Marty?
Hey Paul, what we're gonna do is, um, Marty's having trouble with the audio part of it.
Okay.
So I'm just keep him on the phone and he'll be able to hear it through there.
Okay.
I don't know how, I don't know how he's gonna respond.
Yeah, I know.
That's gonna be the one problem, Marty, I didn't think of that. He should, he should just call in. You can, you can just call in and then we just won't see your picture there, or else, call in and you use your phone when you call in and, and, uh, and we'll get there.
Yeah, I'd rather have his, I'd rather have his voice than the picture, so.
We'd rather, we'd rather be able to see you and hear, or hear you, hear you when you hear us than see you. So if you call in, you can do the same thing on the call in.
Councilman Bomanto, on that email that you responded to, there's a link that'll get you in, that's the link that I used to get on today.
There's a link on the email that'll get you in. Smartphone, just, just do it on through there and then it'll all work through there instead of on the, on the computer. Alright? Alright, bye. Looks like he's trying to call in.
Looks like he's trying to call in.
What channel is that on?
Pardon me?
Which channel is it on? Three?
Under Spectrum?
Yeah.
Uh, thirteen oh one.
Thank you.
It's under Spectrum? Uh, thirteen oh one.
We're still waiting on Marty? Don, you have any communication with Marty at all yet?
No, last I knew he was gonna try to use his phone to get in.
Okay.
I've got video. Getting that back volume again. I'm not even on it here.
We're still waiting on Marty?
I think so. Go right to the council then. Hello? I just lost this thing.
I did too.
I'm in. I'm on the phone. Yep, I'm on the phone.
Why is what's on there though?
Hey, there we go. Hey, is, is Judge, there he is, there's Judge. I'm back from the rodeo.
Okay. Marty, uh, Marty, can you hear me? Yeah. Okay, so let's go, guys, everyone all set to go?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we'll get this, we'll get this going.
Why don't we do a second round first?
I, I already heard you guys, you guys are fine. Ready? Okay, we're gonna call the order to work for the workshop on April twenty first, two thousand twenty. Clear call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Bomanto?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols? Councilmember Lard and Hoover?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of United States of America.
United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, to stand. One nation, under God. Liberty for all. Okay, we'll skip over the, uh, certification of prior meeting, um, and reading of privilege for privilege of the fourth. We'll go, we'll go right to communications from the mayor, including disapproval messages, mayor.
Um, I have nothing right now for this portion.
Okay. And we'll go to the next number six, communication from public and petitions.
We have no communications from the public at this point.
Okay, I did get ahold of Eddie, um, this afternoon, Edwin Ramos and, uh, Tina Butrin from seven sixteen McKinley Avenue called in interest of buying a partial of, uh, an open street, but I'm gonna hand that over to, uh, Edwin in the clerk's office tomorrow and they'll be on our agenda for next council meeting. Okay, so going to number seven?
For the actual meeting.
Correct. So reports to standing committees, boards and communications, commissions, I'm sorry, um, Councilman Williams.
Uh, nothing for the workshop.
Councilman Bomano?
Nothing at all.
Councilman Stoyl?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Nichols?
Uh, nothing.
I do have a couple things tonight, uh, I just have sixty-three Middle Road. I did speak to Randy about this earlier today about a couple trees on the, uh, corner of Middle and Moffett. It's bringing up the sidewalk and she's also having problems with her sewer lines. Randy, you said you were familiar with this?
Absolutely, we'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you. Also, I do have someone from Concerned Citizen, uh, Glenn, this is for you, uh, perhaps civilian inspectors could put a press release explaining the regulation and the procedures on the city code chapter fifty-six dash seven E. Number two, it would be yard refuge. Number four would be the tagged items. And number six would be the covered rubbish containers. I believe he's having, uh, he's having problems in his neighborhood with people just throwing trash out and, you know, not taking care of their respectful, uh, properties in their neighborhoods. And I was wondering if you could take his suggestion and maybe put a press release to remind everybody in the city of Dunkirk what the rules and regulations are.
If I can look into that.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. And that's all I have for, uh, reports of the name, yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna meet with, uh, Glenn tomorrow on that situation.
Okay, good. Okay, so now we're going under unfinished business? Seeing none, go to prefiled resolutions.
Number fifty-nine, resolution accepting funding for Wright Park Phase Two and authorizing grant agreement.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, uh, Edwin, do you have the amended version?
I have a version, I have one version here.
I have the.
So at, at some point in the meeting, um, we'll have to add the, uh, add, add one more resolved down there in between the first and second resolved. It'll be resolved that the city's legislative body, the Dunker Common Council, be advised of any proposed amendments to the master contract via amendatory resolutions that require council approval prior to any changes in the master contract. So when we get to that resolution in the, in the council meeting, we'll have to say that, I don't mind making the motion to amend it, to add that there.
Okay. I'm just saying that maybe we should, you think Edwin should have that resolution, or Richard, is there something you can send him over?
He has. Picked up, um, the attorney told me that I have one in my inbox.
Okay.
He should be outside.
Then at, then at that time, then, then Edwin can, can read that, that resolve.
Okay. Are we good with that?
Yes.
Just, just waiting to make sure, Edwin. Edwin, are you all set?
Yes, sir. Going to number sixty?
Yep, number sixty.
Sixty, resolution authorizing formalized agreement for city treatment of wastewater from North County Industrial Sewer District, now town of Dunkirk, a theme X in near future.
Any discussion, council? Seeing none, sixty-one.
Sixty-one, resolution authorizing new agreement for animal control services.
Any discussion, council? Seeing none, go to sixty-two.
Sixty-two, resolution authorizing agreement for consultant services for Lake Shore Drive Complete Street Project.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, I, I have, uh, just, just to follow up, uh, when you sent this through the email, just wanna make sure that the public knows, and I'll be asking during the regular council meeting, uh, if Rebecca can explain how we'll go through a series of, of, uh, community meetings to, to outline what's gonna happen there, pretty much every step of the way.
Yes, we'll, three public meetings as well as, um, our consultants will be working on reaching out along the drive as well, so I'll say that.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca.
Any more discussion, council? Seeing none, sixty-three.
Sixty-three, resolution for authorization to initiate condemnation of forty-nine East Courtney.
Any discussion, council?
Uh, justice, it's been a long time coming and the neighborhood will be, um, very grateful when this happens. Thank you all.
Anyone else? Seeing none, going to new business? No new business, need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
By Williams, second by Councilwoman Nichols? Clear call the roll.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bomanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Lard and Hoover?
Aye. Meeting is adjourned, workshop. Uh, we're gonna come back in what, about seven minutes? So take a break, if you need to do something, we'll come back and do the regular meeting. Five thirty start.
Probably gonna.
Well, he can't, he's on the phone with work, so they're doing a Zoom call. Here. There.
What happened?
Did you just hit you?
Edwin, you get that resolution?
Paul Edwin looks to be there now.
What's that?
Edwin looks to be there now.
Okay. Okay, everybody outside?
Yep.
Edwin, you I can't hear you on mute. There you go. Tom. Nancy, you there?
No.
Ask if they can hear me.
Tommy, can you hear me?
I can hear you Judge.
Nancy, are you outside?
Well, I can hear you.
Nancy, you're on mute. I can't hear you.
Let's go one to the wayside.
There you go. Gotcha. Marty, you good? Don, are you all right? Good to go?
I'm I'm good. You hear me?
Yeah, how about Marty Bemano?
Here. I have no clue. He's there.
Yep, yeah Marty Judge.
I'm good.
Okay. Eddie, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Call and common common council regular meeting order five thirty and four twenty-one twenty clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Here.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Here.
Councilmember Nichols. Councilmember at large Vandenvouver.
Here. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic. One nation.
One.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible. Liberty.
Okay, certification of prior meetings.
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, April seventh, twenty twenty was presented to the mayor on Friday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty. So into section three point zero three of the city Dunkirk city charter. All items presented to the mayor are now in full force in effect. And witness whereof I have here to set my hand in the city of steel of the city of Dunkirk, New York is twenty-first day of April, twenty twenty.
Need a motion to dispensary near the minutes?
So move.
By councilman Williams second by councilman Bemano.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
At large Vandenvouver.
Hi Kerry. Read under the privilege of the floor regulations.
I have one letter for the privilege of the floor, sir.
Okay.
This is a public comment from Paul Summerfeld sent Monday four twenty 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 at ten thirty P M Dunkirk Common Council. Public comment. The Dunkirk Citizens Advisory Committee is disappointed that the council chose to pass local law number two dash twenty twenty. Changing of the seat charter is overkill to change internal procedure such as having an internal to the council sign off. On any resolution to come before it. Changing of the charter according to the New York State Division of Local Government Services Guide. Revising city charters in New York State age five states revising a city charter is by direct action of the legislative body. Under its local law powers as provided in section ten of the municipal home law rule. Although it's option although this option is infrequently used. It is possible for a city council dot 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 whatever changes are agreed upon are then enacted by local law subject to mandatory referendum or referendum. Opetition is still required by the municipal home rule law section twenty-three and twenty-four. Note the word infrequently. The common council has used this method exclusively for the last forty-three years. To an effect that seems to have confused even the common council. During the common council meeting of April seventh, twenty twenty, at least two members of the common council were advocating making at least. Two changes to the charter. One to eliminate a position then again to reinstate. The very same position as city residents. We find this confusing and wait common councils time. Especially when several portions of the city code are decades out of date. Under prefile resolution number fifty-four resolution for intro number five to local law number five dash twenty twenty. City of Dunkirk, a local law to a city charter and code abolish H R director from article two, section two point zero three, article fifteen, section fifteen of the city charter. The charter and charter two, article two and fifteen of the city code during the council meeting, a member of the common council stated that it had been agreed. That the item was to be pulled but was overridden by the councilman at large and put up for a vote. As a local law and a change to the city charter, shouldn't this resolution have been tabled for a public hearing before being voted on? The C A C restates its assertion that public hearings as opposed to. Which of the and other regular business of the common council be deferred until the health emergency is over. Not all members of the community can react with a day's notice, nor do all of us have the technology methods addressing the common council. The current method locks out part of our community from participation. The C A C also strongly recommend the creation of a charter revision commission as a bipartisan way of updating the city. Code. It should also be pointed out that the nineteen seventy-seven charter revision altered the city dynamic in creating a strong mayor, weak council. Form of government from page thirteen of the state guide, the commission and weak mayor council plan. Little favor as ways of dealing with contemporary municipal problem. Also on that ballot was whether to approve a four-year term for the mayor. The four-year term for the mayor was not approved at that time in the mid two thousands. The mayor's term was changed from two years to four years. The council should consider all of the possible negatives that come from any proposed resolution considering. Failure to do that sends the city on a path of ruin to ruin as it sets the precedent that the council can do whatever it wants. And subsequent councils will do the same. But out of. What out of town investor will want to invest in a city that is willing to change its laws with every new session of the council? Thank you, Paul Summerfeld, chairman Dunkirk Citizens Advisory Commission.
Edwin, do you have anything else for privileges before?
I do not, sir.
Okay, privilege of the floor is closed. Communication of the mayor, including disapproval messages.
Mister Chairman, I have just a few of announcements and a couple of updates. The first announcement. The Auburn Day celebration that was scheduled for this Friday will be postponed for a later date. I'd like to thank Governor Cuomo, the Urban Forestry Council, and Revitalize Dunkirk for the grant funding to plant twelve trees throughout the city. I'm proud to be a part of this initiative and I look forward to a future celebration. Also, funding is available for the Dunkirk Local Development Corporation Small Business Loan Program. Loans are given on a case by case application where businesses can request two thousand to twenty-five thousand in loan fund. At this time, we are concentrating on job retention and helping businesses stay open during these trying times. If you are a small business in Dunkirk and are interested in the program, please contact our director of planning and development Rebecca Worcester for an application and more information. And businesses located in the city of Dunkirk are also eligible for five thousand dollar grants at smallbusiness.com. Through the U S Chamber of Commerce Foundation. The application is a short ten-minute grant application on the save small business website. Funds must be applied towards business expenses and the grant is a rolling application. And again, for questions or more information, please contact our director of planning and development. As far as updates go, I really don't have much to update on. The city remains on a state of emergency. Due to the COVID nineteen. The marina will be opening as far as the boat launch goes. I've been in contact with our marina operator. We are looking at opening that up. He tells me hopefully within the next week it should be opening, but social distancing is still expected. And as far as the lake wall repair project, we've done everything on our end to ensure that the project would meet with the timeline. The timeline, if you recall, we wanted to have that project complete by Memorial Day of this year. Corps of Engineers was out here to do an inspection and we had everything on our end of it done. We have the construction engineers already. Chosen as well as the contractor. As you know, you passed the resolution last week. However, I'm being told that we have one more piece to this for the FEMA funding. The FEMA inspectors have to come in to inspect the the wall. And until they do, we cannot start it or we will not be eligible for those funds. But at this time, I just have to report that I am still working with all of our federal representatives. I'm trying to expedite that process. But I'm being told it may not be until June before they get here, and this is due to the COVID nineteen situation. Other than that, that's basically all the updates I have. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Communications from public and petitions?
Sir, we have no communications at this time from the from the public.
Okay, like I said in the workshop, I do have one from Tina Butrin from seven sixteen McKinley Avenue. Request requesting the purchase on an open street, but I'll give that to you tomorrow clerk and we'll get that in for the next coming council meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, reports to standing committees, boards and commissions, councilman Williams.
Hey, thank you, Mayor, for the update on the seawall. Most of my questions have to deal with with what we're doing moving forward with with this COVID nineteen pandemic. We have a parade that is normally scheduled for Memorial Day. Just wondering what our thoughts are. I'm assuming we're gonna have to cancel that. And what what are what's gonna happen with the summer music stuff and the boat races? Are those gonna be on hold canceled completely? Any idea of where we're going with any of that stuff in the future, just so that the residents could know what to plan for this summer?
Certainly. Basically, as far as Memorial Day parade goes, it appears we may be looking to cancel it. That has that is not official as of yet. We're still waiting to hear from the state on the on the status as far as when they're gonna open and in what phases they're planning to open. Today I was in contact with the governor's representative and it appears that they are making moves to try to reopen regionally. And our region, at least our county, appears to be one of the first that they're looking to do the opening. I don't know exactly what that means as far as Memorial Day parade. So to answer your question, as of yet, we have not canceled it. But to be honest with you, I don't believe that it would be in our best interest to have that event. I think that we'll probably be canceling, but I have not made a determination as of yet on that event. As far as the music on the pier, the Fourth of July, I am waiting to hear from the state on their recommendations. Again, if it's not recommended, then we will be canceling that altogether. I'm hoping that we don't have to cancel that. We have really good events scheduled. We're in the process of contracting with some of the events. And right now we have everything on hold until we hear further information from the state. So as of right now, councilman, I can tell you that we are planning as if we are going to have the Fourth of July celebration, the boat races and music on the pier. However, all of that will be subject to change dependent upon the situation with the COVID nineteen and reopening strategies of New York State.
All right, thank you. And then I don't know if if maybe you or the chief ordelano would be able to answer on Memorial Day also, there's usually. The ceremony at the lighthouse and then the ceremony at Memorial Park. I'm assuming that if the parade is canceled, that there probably wouldn't be any way for us to. Assure that the proper social distancing would be in effect for either of those two events either. So I just wondering thoughts on that.
The first event is a privately held event. I don't know that if they reopen. If they're planning on canceling that or not, I can look into it and get back to you. And as far as the Memorial Day. Right at Memorial Park, I think that if we've canceled the parade, I believe that would probably be canceled as well.
Okay, thank you. I kind of assumed all of that, but I know a lot of people are asking questions, so I figured just get it out there. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Williams. Councilman Bemano? Councilman Bemano?
Uh, thank you. Mayor, thank you for the update. And Randy, thank you for taking care of the couple of items I asked you and you got that done pretty quick. So thank you very much. Also, I'd like to just let the residents know that. We're doing pretty well with this COVID nineteen. Everybody's being vigilant and I just encourage everybody not to get out there too soon. Keep doing what you're doing. Keep the six feet apart. Even in the stores, I see more and more people now wearing the mask like they should be. And staying away from each other. We'll get through this. Just keep doing the right thing. The sooner we keep doing the right thing, the sooner this will be over with. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Bemano. Councilman Stoyl?
He's muted. He's muted.
Your mayor for the update.
Councilman Stoyl, do you have anything?
I just, did you not hear me?
No. I can hear you now.
You got me now?
Yes, I do.
I did. Yeah, well, Mr. Williams pretty much took care of my my section there, but thank you, Don, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Stoyl. Councilwoman Nichols?
Just have a few. The zoning or Chief Edwards, one of the requirements on houses having numbers on them for safety issues in case rescue.
Was that for me?
Yeah.
I I couldn't hear.
Yeah, Nancy.
There was way too much background noise. If anybody heard the question, can you repeat it, please?
Sure. I don't know if it's between you or Glenn on house numbers. One of the requirements of having house numbers on each house that's in the city of Dunkirk.
I'll I'll answer that. House numbers are required on on each residence. I think we should probably look into this a little bit more. It's something that we. Kind of had an issue with over the last few years where either they weren't visible or they were taken down for repair reasons and not put back up. But we should revisit what section of the code that is and and you know, I'll be happy to talk to. The building inspector's office and and move forward with that.
Then I have another one that's on. I've also noticed several houses on West Second Street and West Fourth Street that have propane wells on their front porches. I saw on Sunday they were drilling right on their front porches and I didn't know that was acceptable or lawful or legal.
Um, I do not believe there's actually a local code or ordinance prohibiting that. Although you make a very good point and it is not recommended. As a matter of fact, if we see that. You know, we will make a recommendation. They should not be on especially any covered. Part of a structure.
And these were covered. Randy, I just want to ask you, I'm several had several people ask me if our whispering giant had been coated with the products that were supposed to be coated with last fall.
I'm sorry, I only heard part of that question.
I'm sorry, Randy. Um, I didn't mean to throw you under the bus on this one. Um, do you know that the whispering giant was coated late last summer or early fall as we had discussed before?
Something about coating. Can somebody tell me which sign she's talking about?
Yeah, Randy, she's talking about the statue over by the water treatment plant.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Russ Russ Tenimore just retired, but he worked well with Mr. Toth on the coating and that was coated before. And covered up carefully and and the Parks Division will keep an eye on that and keep that coated. It's. It's something that the whole DPW treasures as much as any everybody else in the city. It's. It's quite something that we're the we're the we're the city in in New York that has there's one in every state and we and Dunkirk has has one and it's. It's a value that more than a quarter million dollars.
Okay, Chief Ordelano, we still do need to do something about the loud cars. I was at my friend's house down by Tim Hortons and there were several of them. They just don't understand on the. Loudness or the quietness. They just don't understand on the loudness or the quietness that the I don't even know how to word it right, but it needs to, I don't know if you want to do a press release on it so that they would be fined or arrested or whatever you're going to do with them. I know that's one of Paul's issues as well. Are you going to comment?
Yeah, absolutely. I have a radio show tomorrow morning. I will talk about that tomorrow morning. And in my upcoming spring and summer press release, I will put it out there to warn people that we will be issuing tickets for violation of the city noise ordinance. As we talked about at the last meeting, that's one of my pet peeves as well, so I promise you we will get on it.
Thanks. And then the vendors on the boardwalk, who will notify on their on the rent and who will do it and when they will do it, if they know what's going to happen?
Who's that, who are you addressing that to?
Can answer that question?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Nancy?
Sorry. The vendors on the boardwalk, they were given granted a monthly waiver on their rent at our last meeting?
Yes.
Will they be notified through mail on which month and when it will take place?
We probably could do that for the month of May, and we could do that via phone and a mailer just to cover our bases. I'll make sure we do that this week.
Great, thanks. The last thing is to pack. To see the damage that are all raining.
Having a hard time hearing. I want to say that she was talking about the damage of the pier with the wind and no the lights, some of the lights are out already, and a lot of the grass is tore up and damaged at the pier. I believe that's what she was saying.
Yes, is is there money to rep or do the repairs or replacements to all that? And where is the money coming from?
I can speak to that if you want. The there, there's a, there's a, there's a guarantee by the contractor on the lights, so we'll get the contractor to fix those. And the repair to the grass is going to be simple. Our Parks and Streets Division do that routinely, and once the weather breaks a little bit more, we'll get all that grass repaired. Maybe Rebecca would like to speak more on that?
I I was going to say exactly that, Randy. Thanks. We'll work together with DPW, and as far as the lights, there's a warranty, so yes, we'll we will be getting those repaired.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Just a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank Sergeant Dan Manzello and Gabe Taylor again for getting this together for us. Great work, as always, and very much appreciated. Just two other things. Sixty-three Middle Road, we spoke on it on in the workshop to Randy. It's on the corner of Mopet Street and sixty-three Middle with the trees. And I believe you said that was on the sidewalk program anyways, right, Randy? Want to comment?
Yes. Yes, sir, and I'm going to drive by there after this meeting and refresh my memory on it and put it at the top of our list to get to.
Okay, yeah, I would appreciate that. It's one of our old retired firefighters, fire chiefs, so hopefully we can help them out. Also, yep, thanks, Randy. Also, for Glenn, I just mentioned perhaps a building inspector could put a press release explaining the regulations and procedures of the city code chapter fifty-six dash seven E, number two yard refuge, number four tag items, and number six, the covered rubbish containers. It's with spring coming around, I know there's a lot of junk and people aren't keeping up their property, and I just don't want one bad egg ruining a whole cart. So you get one bad person and doesn't take care of their property in the neighborhood, and everyone else does. It's I think we need to lean on them. So Judge, I believe you said you're going to talk to Glenn on this tomorrow?
Yes, we're meeting tomorrow. Councilman Stoyle or myself?
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And that's all I have. Okay, so moving on to unfinished business.
None, sir.
Seeing none. Go to prefiled resolutions?
Number fifty-nine, resolution accepting funding for Wright Park Phase Two and authorizing grant agreement.
And this is the resolution, Edwin, I believe that Richard just sent you?
Yes, I have the revised resolution, if you would like for me to read that, sir.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Revised Resolution Number Fifty-nine dash twenty-twenty, April twenty-three, twenty-twenty, by Councilmembers Bamanto and Williams. Resolution accepting funding for Wright Park Phase Two and authorizing grant agreement. Whereas the city of Dunkirk applied for financial assistance from the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation under the Environmental Protection Fund Grant Program for the purpose of funding the Wright Park Phase Two project. And whereas the city of Dunkirk is authorized and directed to accept these grant funds in an amount not to exceed two hundred ninety-eight thousand three hundred eighteen dollars for the project described in the grant application, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Dunkirk is authorized and directed to agree to the terms and conditions of the master contract with OPRHP for Wright Park Phase Two project and be it further resolved that the city's legislative body, the Dunkirk Common Council, be advised of any proposed amendments to the master contract via a mandatory resolution that require council approval prior to any changes in the master contract. Resolved that the city of Dunkirk is authorized and directed to agree to the terms and conditions of any required deed and easement granted to OPRHP that affects title to real property owned by the municipality and improved by the grant funds, which may be duly recorded as a public access covenant, conservation easement and or preservation covenant. And resolved that the city common council, as the legislative governing body of the municipality, delegate signing authority to execute the master contract, any required deed of easement, and any other certification to the individuals who hold the following elected or appointed municipal offices or employment position titled the mayor and the Director of Planning and Development.
Awesome, thank you. Need a motion to amend?
So moved.
By Councilman Williams, second by Councilwoman Nichols. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bamanto? Councilmember Bamanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyle? Councilmember Stoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember A.Large Vandenhuber?
Aye, Carrie. Now I need a motion. Any discussion on this, counsel?
Yeah, I just got a little bit. Just to explain why why we amended it, just wanted to make sure that council was involved in any amendments, if any at all. I know there's a lot of people in the first ward around Wright Park that have requested a lot of different things down there, and I just wanted to make sure that they could contact me or any of the council members and make sure that what they wanted in there is going to still remain in there. So that's that's why we amended it.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, counsel? Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bamanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols? Councilmember A.Large Vandenhuber?
Aye, Carrie.
Number sixty, resolution authorizing formalized agreement for city treatment and wastewater from North County Industrial Sewer District now, town of Dunkirk, a Phoenix in near future.
Any discussion, counsel? Seeing none, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bamanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember A.Large Vandenhuber?
Aye, Carrie, sixty-one.
Number sixty-one, resolution authorizing new agreement for animal control services.
Any discussion, counsel? Seeing none, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bamanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember A.Large Vandenhuber?
Aye, Carrie.
Number sixty-two, resolution authorizing agreement for consultant services for Lake Shore Drive Complete Street Project.
Any discussion, counsel?
Yes, just wanted to have Rebecca explain how the community will be involved in this project.
Yeah, so with our consultants, we have three public meetings that we will be scheduling as well as our consultants reaching out to every business along Lake Shore Drive that will be within the boundary. So the boundary is Main Street to Brigham Road on Lake Shore Drive, and they'll be reaching everyone and getting everyone involved.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion, counsel? Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bamanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember A.Large Vandenhuber?
Aye, Carrie.
Number sixty-three, resolution for authorization to initiate condemnation of forty-nine East Courtney.
Any communication, counsel?
I I would just add that, like Councilwoman Nichols said in the in the workshop, this is a long time coming. The the neighbors have been asking for this. I think I've worked with different council members on this, and I like the determination that Councilwoman Nichols had in making sure that this thing got done pretty darn quickly since she's been in office. So thank you, Councilwoman Nichols, for for working with them all to get this done. And like I said, long time coming.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other discussion, counsel? Seeing none, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bamanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember A.Large Vandenhuber?
Aye, Carrie. New business, I just wanted to mention, we have no new business, but I'd just like to mention to everybody, thank you very much for cooperating with us. I know it's tough and it's tough times, and hopefully we'll get through this and get back to our regular schedule, but I just want to thank everybody for for the meeting tonight and attending and participating. Thank you very much. Need a motion to adjourn?
Councilman, before you do that, can I make a comment?
Sure.
This is Randy. Just want to remind everybody that tomorrow is Earth Day and just say thank you for the earth and but more importantly, it's also Administrative Professional Day, and I I'm sure we all join in thanking all the great administrative professionals in City Hall and help the city, especially in public works where for seventy years, we've only had three administrative professionals. They're all fantastic. Tomorrow, I'd like to make take a shout out to Pam Beecher. Before that, Lisa Macoliac, and before that, the late, great Vern Dedzabraki. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much, Randy. Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn.
Patients with us while we're piling through the zone, very difficult.
Yep, thank you very much. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Nichols. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Bamanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyle?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember A.Large Vandenhuber?
Aye, meeting's adjourned. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, too.